Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regular city council meeting of October 9th, 2018. We do have one person that would like to address us on the open forum, Dana Collins. Ms. Collins, could you do us a favor and sign in with your name and address? It's just up there at the dais. And also just speak it out loud for the audience?
Right here?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Dana Collins, and I have been running a small business in a room which I rent from Salons by J.C. in the city of Richfield for about a year now, and which is in good standing with the city of Richfield. I am here today to encourage you to reconsider lowering the price of the enterprise massage therapist license fee for me, and here's why. I have always and currently hold a National Board Certification License of Massage Therapy, and even though Minnesota does not recognize it, it is recognized in 98 percent of all other states in the country. And just the fact that I hold such a license, and all the continuing education and insurance requirements that come with it, should be enough to seriously consider lowering the cost of your massage therapy enterprise license fee for me, just one person who is renting a room in an established salon. Among all the other cities in this area, Richfield's is the highest. The next highest is 200, which is more reasonable. Your almost $1,000 enterprise fee really puts a burden on me as a small-business, self-employed, owner-operator massage therapist who is trying to get established here in Richfield. I encourage you to consider lowering the enterprise fee for a massage therapist that holds a National Board License, which is above and beyond what Richfield and the state of Minnesota require, which proves I am serious about my profession, which I work hard to accomplish, and not someone who is going to abuse the profession. I'm a professional, self-employed, small-business woman, and I would like to be respected and taken seriously, and not have to pay for the mistakes of others. I find your fee of almost $1,000 discriminatory against me as a small-business woman just trying to make it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. I, for one, recognize massage therapy as a medical art. I'm surprised, given the acceptance by a lot of healthcare providers and everything, that it isn't recognized in the state of Minnesota. I think it's somewhat backward, given how advanced we are in most of our medical technology and treatment. So, I don't think anybody up here is in a position or anything. I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, and I think it certainly would make sense to take a look at what would be a rate that would satisfy our needs in terms of investigation and everything, at the same time provide an entree to sole proprietors and everything, getting their foot in the door and trying to move forward with a professional career. So, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one other comment, Mr. Mayor. And I don't know, the information that you have about how we stack up to some other cities, I think that would be great information to share with us, and maybe after the meeting we could connect up. And I think we've looked at some of these in the past, and certain fees and things, and it's never great to be an outlier, you know, too high or too low on a lot of things. And so, there's been a willingness in the past to kind of take a look at those things. And so, I think if there's time, you know, either during the meeting or after, to connect up with someone with our staff and have a conversation.
Sure, I would like that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
And if I could, Mayor, if I could just say one thing briefly. I just wanted to thank you for coming here, and sometimes I sound like a broken record, but this isn't our house, it's your house. It's, we're glad when members of the public can come here and give us information that's really useful. Even if it's not useful, it's still your house, so you're still welcome to use the forum. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I think that was the only open forum, so if you'll stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would move the approval of the minutes of the special city council work session of September 17th, 2018, special city council work session of September 25th, 2018, and the regular city council meeting of September 25th, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Hats off to Hometown Hits. Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez, would you like to kick this off this evening?
Sure, I will start. Let's see here. All right, I had a couple things. So, there's a lot of great, there's always a lot of great community events going on in Richfield, but a couple things happening this weekend. This Saturday is the Great Pumpkin Giveaway at Fairwood Park at 6,700 Logan Avenue, Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to noon. So, it's a great Halloween and fall free, open to the public opportunity to just get out with your kids and your family, and enjoy the programming. The second item, also this Saturday, is the Historical Society's annual meeting. So, again, another great resource in our community, the Richfield Historical Society has their annual meeting at 6:00 p.m. at the American Legion. And lastly, I just want to say thank you to all of the community groups and residents and community members who participated in Church of the Assumptions Health Fair last Sunday. There was over 450 people who attended. A lot of families, a lot of kids getting their flu shots, free health screenings, bilingual material resources and support for Richfield's residents, with over 40 different groups participating, and close to 500 folks who attended. So, just a lot of great things happening in the future, and great things really connecting our residents to resources and support. And that's about it.
Thank you. Councilmember Howard?
I just have one. It's a reminder for our family as well. The annual Half Haunted House at Wood Lake Nature Center is coming up on Saturday, October 20th, from 2:00 to 7:30. It's a fun opportunity to get in the Halloween costume a little bit early, and head over for some fun at Wood Lake. It's both educational, and, you know, you leave with a little bit of candy as well, so it's a good time.
Thank you. Sorry, doing multitasking here. A couple things. I had an opportunity, the supervisor of Public Works, Kristin Asher, asked me to come down to a press conference this morning with her in regards to infrastructure and seeking additional funding for it. So, in terms of hats off to hometown, I got to go down and speak, but, you know, it was interesting, because it was about funding, and it's about infrastructure and people not being aware of the necessity of it and what's happening. And I think I mentioned this morning that I didn't feel a C grade was something that was assigned to the state, but I think that we're operating at about a B-plus level, and I told them that. And what I told them is that there was sufficient foresight, not by this council, not by this mayor, but people that sat in these seats 10 years ago, that kicked it off and got it started. And while people now are rightly seeking additional funding and additional partners for the funding, we have moved forward, not without inflicting some pain on our citizens, but being able to find ways to guard our tax levies, to do bonding, to do smart capital planning, to be in a situation where we are today, which from my perspective is 70 percent ahead of any first-ring suburb or any other suburb or city in the metropolitan area. And it's always been my viewpoint to give credit where credit is due. And credit is due to our predecessors. I guess, I certainly have to mention Mr. Deitch, because he's been here forever, so he's participated since it got started. But I guess the point I was trying to make is that there's pain with dealing with infrastructure in the sense of funding it, whether it's bonding assessments or anything else, but you can alleviate it in a couple ways. You can let the citizens know why it's so important to get it done, why it's so important to be careful about how you fund it, why it's important to stay on good terms with our neighbors and county and everybody else that can alleviate or help with the funding. And keep your citizens advised as to why you're doing it, what's going to happen when it's done, and why it's important that we stay ahead of the curve. And I think that a lot of people in the room recognize the truth in that, just haven't quite got to the starting line yet. So, I just take my hats off to everybody in the city over the last 10 or 12 years that saw what was coming, kick-started it, and we've got to this point today where we get Lindo done, and we're in pretty good shape. So, that's, I guess, hats off to everybody that's worked here, and put us in the position to sit up here and brag about it. So, thanks. Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two announcements, two hats off to Hometown Hits. The first is our annual wine tasting for the Richfield Foundation that's coming up this Thursday. For those that don't know what the foundation is, the Richfield Foundation supports everything good in Richfield. So, if you're a nonprofit that's doing good in Richfield, or an athletic association, you've probably gotten help from the Richfield Foundation. Let me say just 20 seconds about how phenomenal the wine tasting is. This is a great event. Bill Fillmore, who I saw this evening, he does a great job working with vendors. We have literally dozens of vendors that bring probably a half dozen to 10 different wines apiece. So, you're looking at hundreds of different wines. It's a great event, it's a great environment, we usually have a great turnout. So, thank you in advance to all our sponsors who've made that event possible, but come out, enjoy some amazing wine, and really support a great nonprofit organization here in Richfield. And then, the other hats off is to our Richfield Humanitarian of the Year, Dr. Joyce Marie, who just this last week, or a week and a half ago, had a book signing over at the local Barnes and Nobles. And her book is, "We're All on a Journey to Find Truth: The Life and History of Sojourner Truth." And just, we already know she's an incredible woman and incredible leader in our community. We've honored her as our Person of the Year, but just wanted to take my hats off to not just a remarkable leader, but a remarkable author here in Richfield, and her book on Sojourner Truth. So, I've ordered my copy, encourage everybody else to do the same, and we're all proud of you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, Mayor. My first one is the Hennepin County Clinic, which is on Lindell and 66th Street. They have opened a medicine drop box, and those are for unused or unwanted drugs to prevent abuse or prevent poisoning. So, it's always a good idea when you don't need your drugs anymore, is to take them to the Hennepin County Clinic and dispose of them there, before you used to have to go take them to the library at York. So, this is a lot more convenient for us. I also wanted to highlight the fact that the Richfield Police Department seized a large quantity of marijuana and oxycontin and other narcotics in a recent raid, and that was done in partnership with the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office. And to follow up, you know, I appreciate, and the police appreciate, the fact that a neighbor will see something and alert the police about it, so that the police will do a little homework on it, and, you know, be able to take care of business. I mean, the Richfield Police really have to rely on the public, and we do our job by helping them help us. The next one is the Richfield Annual Fall Boutique and Market, and that will be October 27th, from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. at the Richfield Community Center. And next, I don't know how many of you, I think there's a few people in the audience that will remember the Lindell Hardware Store. And that was, you know, I think I was like 10, I remember, you know. I'm just teasing Mr. Deitch, because he remembers it well. But anyway, the Richfield Historical Center is having a display of the old Lindell, which was 6616 Lindell Avenue, and the collection is on display up until January 2019. And the Historical Society is open to the public on Wednesdays and Saturdays from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. And Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez talked about the annual meeting of the Historical Society. And, let's see. I also, you know, all of a sudden, the Historical Society is doing a great deal of things. And at the Richfield Community Center, they continue with a series in terms of history and remembering our past and connecting with it again. And so, on October 17th, at 11:00 a.m. at the Richfield Community Center, they are going to do a series that starts its Richfield Village to Richfield City. And I know when I was elected in '85, I believe, and I was kind of taken back, because we had people that came up to speak in the podium, and they kept calling, you know, Village, that Richfield Village, or they kept saying, "Well, we've got to go to the Village Hall," as opposed to City Hall. So, it's fun to, just to go back and really appreciate all the efforts that the Richfield Historical Society is doing. And I also wanted to acknowledge, you know, this, and I think Chris Link brought this to us, right, Chris? And this is put out by the American Society of Civil Engineers, and this one in particular is about Minnesota. And what I like about this is it's really important for us to kind of keep track of what's going on in our state, and to compare it to our national cities. And it keeps us up to date and well-informed, and I appreciate that Public Works is always making an effort to bring us one every single year. So, thank you, Chris. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I can't let this pass without suggesting that there's a local resident that goes over to the Historical Center and posts six or eight photos going back in time, you know, the '50s and the '60s, and he posts them as history, and we're having, you know, the Lindell Hardware, which you and I shop that frequently. And it's amazing when you think of the lifespans and everything that we experience in our city, what's history to everybody up here, except you and myself, is what we lived.
Yeah.
And it's dating us, but, I mean, I get as much a kick out of looking at pictures from the high school in the '50s, Lindell Hardware, and all that. And it's a trip into the past for you and me, and it's purely the past to the other people up here. But that's what makes, I guess that's part of what makes Richfield so unique, is, like I'm saying, three out of the five council members view it as history and are interested, because it's part of what Richfield is, and it's part of what we live. And that span of ages is what really makes us unique, and also such a wonderful place to live. It's kind of cool.
And Mr. Mayor?
For the record, Mayor, I grew up going to Lindell Hardware.
Well, yeah, but they didn't have only push lawnmowers when you went.
Excellent point, Mayor.
Okay, just checking.
I just wanted to comment that, you know, we have such an interesting agenda before us, and this is probably the first time that the consent calendar is a little bit more interesting than the agenda before us. But thank you to the folks that turned out, because we really appreciate it, because that really shows how, you know, the agenda tends to draw people out. So, thank you for coming.
All the hundreds of you, thank you.
At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Item three is the consent calendar. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. For those here in the audience, the hundreds, and those at home, consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the city council in one motion, and once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and their recommended actions will also have been approved, and they require no further council action. Tonight, we start with item A, consideration of the approval of the purchase of an Elgin Street Sweeper in 2019 from McQueen Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $197,701, including trade-in for the use by the Public Works Department. Item B, consideration of the adoption of a resolution authorizing an amendment to extend the expiration date of the partnership agreement with the state of Minnesota Department of Transportation for the purchase of fuel to June 30th, 2019. Item C, consideration of the approval of a license agreement with E. Clan Incorporated doing business as B&amp;J Trees, to sell trees under the picnic pavilion at Veterans Park. Item D, consideration of the approval of first reading of an ordinance rezoning property at 7301 Penn Avenue South, from single-family residential to neighborhood business, C1. And finally, item E, consideration of the approval of first reading of an ordinance, amending the zoning code to make tattoo business permitted rather than conditionally permitted in the C2 general business zoning district. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
I would move the consent calendar.
Second.
Any comments on any of the items?
I just think it's wonderful that we continue to sell Christmas trees at Veterans Park and the pavilion there, and I love seeing that.
Okay. I would like to just make a comment on the, considering the approval of that first reading in regards to tattoo businesses. I think we've seen a revision in what sort of services are offered by tattoo parlors, and the simple fact of the matter is body art is a hugely, largely successful business these days. And I think being flexible enough to have an owner suggest that the nature of the body art that's being offered, I think it's permanent eyebrows and some other aesthetic-type things that, once again, kind of shows the flexibility the city has in terms of accommodating the ordinances to new businesses that are successful and want to move into our neighborhoods. So, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar is passed. Next item on the agenda has been assigned to Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a public hearing for consideration of the adoption of resolutions regarding the annual interstate nicklet Lindell project area assessment and proposed work for the year 2019. The ILN project area assessment was established to recover special maintenance expenses in the 77th Street area in 1988. The current services include maintenance and operation of the irrigation systems, weed control, mowing, fertilization, trash and litter removal, and repaintings. These current services are provided on both sides of 77th Street wall. The maintenance functions are funded through a maintenance assessment on 77th Street commercial properties. And city staff determined the actual assessment cost of current services for 2017 for this area will be $77,793.83. And for 2019, the maintenance is $80,000. So, this is a public hearing. Does anyone like to, would like to speak up? Anyone here to speak on this issue? It's a public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed.
Yeah. Well, Mr. Chris, do you have anything to add? Then I will go ahead and move the adoption, adopting the assessment on the ILN project area for cost incurred to maintain the area for 2017, and adopt the resolution ordering the undertaking of the current service project within the ILN project area for 2019.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Assessment is passed. Councilmember Garcia, I doubled up with you just because I wanted you to manage to manipulate ILN and LHN.
And really, I think, well, I really appreciate that. That's really considerate of you, because these are obviously in my ward, although all of us wanted number seven, and I see that you gave that to Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez. But, you know, especially Councilmember Howard really was looking forward to that one, but, you know, in your wisdom, you chose the right person, I believe.
It's the dartboard.
Yes. So, anyway, I will start. This is, again, it's a public hearing, and it's a consideration of the adoption of resolutions regarding the annual Lindell Hub Nicklet Maintenance District Assessment and Proposed Work for 2019. The Lindell Hub Nicklet Maintenance Assessment was established to recover special maintenance expenses in the Lindell Hub Nicklet area in 1981. The current services include maintenance and operation of irrigation, weed control, mowing, trash and litter removal, and maintenance of street lighting systems. This area is approximately bonded by 64th Street, First Avenue, 67th Street, and Emerson Avenue. So, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the council on this public hearing? Anyone? Anyone?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
So, I will move the adoption of the assessment of the Lindell Hub Nicklet District for cost incurred to maintain the area for 2017, and... And next is adopt a resolution ordering the undertaking of the current service project within the Lindell Hub Nicklet District for 2019.
I'd second the motion or the recommendation. All in favor? Resolution is adopted. Next item on the agenda is Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez's item.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to state that I think those of us are pretty well versed with this item. If, if Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez needs our help, we'll be glad to help.
Thank you, I might need your help, I'll let you know. The next item is a public hearing in consideration of the adoption of a resolution adopting the assessment for removal of diseased trees from private property for work ordered from January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017. The health of the trees within municipal limits is threatened by shade tree disease and is the city's responsibility to control and prevent the spread of these diseases. If the city deems it necessary to remove a diseased tree on private property, the property owner has three options available. One, remove the tree themselves. Two, hire and pay for their own contractor. Or three, hire their own contractor and request the cost of the tree be remove, tree removal be assessed against their property tax. In the period from January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017, 11 property owners chose the third option. The total amount to be assessed is $36,144.71. This is a public hearing, is anybody here to speak on this issue?
If I may, council member. The city received a written objection to assessment for removal of the tree from property located at 6221 Fifth Avenue South, Richfield, Minnesota 55423. So I'm going to read the objection into the record. This tree was tagged as a diseased tree and was moved at cost of $3,900. The tree was completely healthy and the removal company told us there no way that this tree should have been required to be removed. It was maybe splitting at a crotch about 12 feet from the ground and we should have been able to do a cable tie-up if the city had given us that option. We feel that the city inspection was done and completed by forester Joe Clark when neither of us were, were present at the time and was totally unfair. We also feel that because of the unwarranted removal of this tree, that the property has decreased considerably in value and we have incurred increased electric, electricity usage because of the loss of shade from this tree. And had the homeowners been here, they would have been required to sign in and state their names, so I will read the names sincerely, Tim Grootzick and Martha Miller. Chris, can you give us some insight into, to what happened? There seems to be an indication that they received no notice of their options or an ability to appeal or to offer other options that they thought were more appropriate.
Mayor members of the council, this is the first time I've heard of this. With all of these removals, we're extensive with, with options, paperwork, also our, our city's forester, Joe Clark, meets with people one-on-one to discuss their options without looking back at our, our work order and removal notes. I do not have any further information regarding this tree.
Would it be possible, I, I'll return the, the letter to the, to, to the city, but perhaps follow up and just find out what steps or what we did in terms of, of noticing them with a diseased tree or somehow, somehow tried to reconcile what they're saying in our normal procedures?
Yeah, yes, I absolutely could follow up.
Great, thank you.
All right, I will continue. So this is a public hearing, is anybody else here with comments on this issue?
I'd move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
I will make the motion to adopt a resolution adopting the assessment for removal of diseased trees from private property for work ordered from January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017.
Second. All in favor? The, geez, the resolution is passed. Item number eight is Councilmember Howard.
This item is a public hearing in consideration of the approval of a second reading of a transitory ordinance vacating 64th Street right-of-way between 16th Avenue and Richfield Parkway. In conjunction with site plan approvals related to the Cedar Point 2 development, NHH Properties LLC, which is the developer, they're requesting to vacate a portion of 64th Street between 16th Avenue and Richfield Parkway. The eastern half of this section of road was removed when Richfield Parkway was constructed. The western half is currently a dead end. The proposed multifamily project will remove any need for this roadway and all utilities within and above the right-of-way will be relocated as part of the project. And this is a public hearing, is anyone here to speak for the public hearing? Anyone here to speak for the public hearing? Anyone here to speak?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
Then I will move approval of the transitory ordinance vacating 64th Street right-of-way between 16th Avenue and Richfield Parkway.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The transitory ordinance is passed. Item number nine, Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor, this is a public hearing in consideration of the adoption of a resolution adopting the assessment for unpaid false alarm user fees against private property. So we're going to conduct a, a public hearing, are there any, are there any comments regarding this resolution? I have, I have a question, perhaps for, for our council about the, the, the assessment. I, I don't see a definition for, for false alarm users, I was just curious, is there, is there an appeal process? Do they appeal to the council if somebody felt they were, they were good faith alarm users? I was just curious.
I would, Councilmember, I'll try, members of the council. First of all, you know, I'm not an expert in this, but my recollection of it is, this isn't just because they would have one, yeah, it's, you have to have, it's, it's three of them. So it's an issue where there's, you know, repetitive problem with
A serial offender.
Yeah. And so that's what, that's what this comes to. As far as, I don't know, Chris, are you aware of any appeal process with that?
No, I'm not, I know, I'm sure they're notified by Public Safety when it happens, you know, after three times, and the fourth time is when the bill actually occurs, we send the bill out, and I'm sure that they're notified by Public Safety and if Public Safety has talked to them, you know, we have an issue here, we need to rectify the problem, but I'm not aware of any appeal process.
If I may, I, firsthand experience, I always check the list to make sure we're not on it. You know, it's, it's interesting because we have, we have one or two annually and, and sometimes, I think once it was, somebody broke a window and we've got motion detectors that will set it off. I, it's lucky enough for me that I live two blocks away from the office, so what will happen with ours, it goes to our monitors who, who call, call the owners first. So Steve Parsley, who lives two blocks the other way, and myself, two blocks west of there, normally one of us gets the call and is close enough to go over and address it and tell them you don't have to, to call the police. If, if neither one of us are there and everything, then they could catch up with us and if we get there, and I don't know, I think that, that I've been there twice about the same time that the police arrived. And it's, it's welcome because when I get the call, I don't know what set it off until we go inside the building and look. And it was a, a good experience for me because on one occasion, the, the canine officer came with a canine and actually said, if you don't, you know, sit outside because we're training. So, and we've got two and a half floors, so they brought the, the canine in, did the search and everything, so it was interesting to watch him do that. But I, I don't know, I've never been in a position to, whether, whether as a elected official or as just a property owner, to have exceeded the, the number. My, my guess is if, depending on what we find in there and everything, I, I understand that it, that it requires a call and a search and, and, and some, some administrative costs are always involved. So I don't have a clue if we have a, a process or a procedure to say, can I at least explain what happened or what we all found when we got there? And I don't know, I, I guess I'm not gonna sit up here and take a position on what the city should or should not do, but I think, I, I don't know that we would ever refuse to offer a hearing or discussion as to what happened and, and see if, if there's some alternatives, but I, I don't know of any process.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Troutman, the, the city code does provide for process.
Okay.
And it's explained in Section 915.07 that if an alarm user charged with an alarm user fee may make a written appeal of the charge to the Director of Public Safety within 15 days, and then the Director of Public Safety makes the final determination about whether it will be upheld.
I think that's all, that's all we can ask for is an ability to, to offer an explanation, so, thank you.
Thank you, council, that was, that was just my question, we, we feel that the folks have a, a good faith opportunity to be heard, that's great. Last, last opportunity, public, don't all rush at once.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution is passed.
Do, do I need to move?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, I would move that we adopt a resolution adopting the assessment for unpaid false alarm user fees against private property.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution is passed. Next, next item is Councilmember Howard again.
This is a public hearing in consideration of the adoption of a resolution adopting the assessment for weed elimination from private property and removal or elimination of public health or safety hazards from private property. Minnesota state statutes provide that the city may levy a special one-year assessment for the elimination of public health or safety hazards or the elimination of weeds from private properties. The special assessments are based on costs incurred by the city in connection with the abatement of weeds or public health or safety hazards on certain properties in the city which are not properly maintained. The owners of the subject properties are notified by the city to take corrective action with regard to the issue within the property. If the specific property issues were not abated within the proper time limit, the city would take the corrective action necessary and bill the property owner. In all cases, property owners have been notified that any unpaid charges or fees may be assessed against their property. And this is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak for the public hearing? Anyone here to speak for the public hearing? Anyone else here to speak for the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
Before I make the motion, just one comment on this, I know we do this every year, but as I recall, it seems like in the, in the, each year, we seem to, the number of these continue to be going down, which I think is a good thing. Is that, is that accurate this year again?
Yes, it is, and I think it has a lot to do with, you know, five, six, seven years ago there with the whole market crash and everything, there were a lot of foreclosed properties and things like that, and properties that just weren't being taken care of, and now that the market has returned and improved and stuff, I think it's, it's decreased significantly. I mean, I think we got maybe, maybe 20 this year, and I've had well over 60 in prior years, so you're absolutely correct.
Thanks.
I think maybe I'd just add, I'd just, I thank you to our, our city manager, Steve Devich, and John Stark is here, you and your team. I know those are one of the relatively frequent, I don't know, of the 20, maybe I got half of those calls or emails, and you guys get on those so quickly, and that's just a great way for our staff to just build goodwill with the city when they see things like that and they feel powerless and then, and then we're, you're able to, to address that right away, so, so thank you for that, guys.
Then I will move to adopt a resolution adopting the assessment for weed elimination from private property and removal or elimination of public health or safety hazards from private property.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution is passed. Item number 11 is assigned to Councilmember Reagan Gonzalez.
The night, the next item is the cancellation of the public hearing in consideration of a resolution for a preliminary plat of the Cedar Point 2 addition. In conjunction with an application for a planned unit development, Cedar Point 2 NHH Properties LLC will be replating the site. The plat will combine up to 29 parcels and vacated right-of-way to allow for construction of multifamily apartments and townhome projects along 6,300 and 6,400 blocks of 16th Avenue in Richfield Parkway. Negotiations with one of the two remaining private owners remain underway. If negotiations are successful, the applicant will be able to include this property in the preliminary plat and reduce additional work and permitting complications. For this reason, the applicant has requested that the plat and reduced additional work and permitting, oh, excuse me, the applicant has requested that consideration be delayed. This item will be rescheduled for the near future, but a definitive date is unknown at this time. A preliminary plat is required prior to issuance of building permits. Is there anything additional with staff?
No, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I would just say that, you know, there are 13 privately-owned properties on, on the west side of the street, the developer has 11 of them either under contract or already closed. The two remaining ones, other, one, there's a health issue, and one, they're in negotiations with, neither of whom have indicated that they're unwilling sellers. It just didn't make any sense to plat it now excluding two parcels when they're fairly optimistic that they will be able to, to include those and then go back through the process all over again.
Makes sense. All right, with that, I will make the motion to cancel the public hearing to consider a resolution for a preliminary plat of the Cedar Point 2 addition.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is canceled. Item number 12 is the consideration of a request for the City Council to confirm the appointment of Pam Dimitranko as Administrative Services Director slash Assistant City Manager for the City of Richfield. The department structure of the City of Richfield has been modified periodically to fit the needs of the organization. In late 1979, the department structure of the city was changed featuring the combination of several departments into a few large departments. This change included the establishment of the Administrative Services Department which incorporated the Finance, City Clerk, Deputy Registrar, Human Resources, Assessing, Central Services, Data Progressy, Functions Divisions into one department. Over the years, some of the functions in their associated divisions have changed, been renamed or moved from one department to another. The Administrative Services Department has also had changes but remained structured relatively the same since its creation. However, there has not been an Administrative Services Director since 2004, when then Administrative Services Director, Assistant City Manager Stephen Devich was promoted to the position of City Manager. The practical impact of that continued vacancy is that some of the division managers have reported directly to the City Manager for the past 14 years. In more recent years, Pam Dimitranko, who served as Human Resources Manager, Assistant City Manager, took over supervision of Human Resources. In addition, Ms. Dimitranko also took over the supervision of the Information Technologies Division about six months ago. Finance Manager Regis took on the assessing function as they shared staffing and the City Manager retained supervision of the Information Technologies, City Clerk, Deputy Registrar, and some of the Risk Management Divisions. Mr. Devich, how the hell did you keep track of that?
I probably didn't very well.
I'm saying that, you know, you were shuffling, shuffling the deck every day. Okay. With the recent establishment of the Finance Department and the pending retirement of the City Manager, it is the perfect opportunity to fill the Administrative Services Director position. The appointment of Pam Dimitranko to the Administrative Services Director position is formally promoting her into a position that she has partially done over the past few years. She is fully qualified and capable of performing the duties of this position for the City of Richfield. In addition, the position also includes the title of Assistant City Manager, which Ms. Dimitranko has held for the past several years. Any comments? Pam, is it gonna work better for you just to have this all consolidated into one title so you don't have to have a card that's this big? I'm just checking, I, I see you carrying them around, and I'm, I've never asked for one 'cause I don't have any place to put it. Okay. With that being said, at this time, I would move to confirm the appointment of Pam Dimitranko as Administrative Services Director, Assistant City Manager for the City of Richfield.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And well deserved, if I may say so.
Somebody has to carry the City Manager.
Well, and as, as it Well, and as, as it just so happens, it's a City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Generally, I don't have a report because, really, I, I send off a lot of stuff to city council on a, on a regular basis through either emails or I'm, I'm good at doing a lot of council memos. I just want to, you know, kind of just bring up the fact that we had a study session just prior to the meeting, and there was a proposal, initial proposal in from the folks at Lund's Byerly's there on Penn Avenue, looking at making, upgrading the store and the potential housing there, and just kind of an excitement about what we keep on seeing here in Richfield, and that's so much interest in, in our community into, in redeveloping. When we talked a while ago about the issue of there being $200 million in the pipeline kind of thing, obviously, there's more that's on the way on top of that, and I do expect that to keep on in the future, you know, barring some awful recession or something, but it's so encouraging to see all of this interest in Richfield and, you know, what Richfield is turning into. It's kind of, it's really, it's really special, and I think folks in the community see that, and I, and I hope they appreciate the fact that, that what you talked about earlier, Mayor, and that is the fact that this city was on the very front end of reinvesting into itself in all of our infrastructure. And every first-string suburb in this United States is facing the same darn thing, whether you're a suburb of Minneapolis, St. Paul, or Pittsburgh, or Detroit, or wherever. And, you know, as, as folks have moved out of the first-string suburbs, you know, the people who, who lived there in, on the front end of putting a community together, put in the infrastructure, and everybody thinks, well, it's all there, and it's all permanent, and, but it falls apart. And I think part of why Richfield, again, is so attractive is because the city council and the city councils before you have reinvested back in our community, and it really pays dividends when you look at our community and look how good it looks from the way that we take care of, and, you know, Councilmember Howard, you just brought up the, you know, the issue about we don't have a lot of the, the weed assessment kind of things. That's because the city council several years ago was getting a lot of complaints and said, "Staff, do something about it. We don't want to hear these complaints." And we did. I mean, the enforcement, it's taken time, but it's kind of where folks in the community understand what is expected in terms of keeping track, keeping your property up, and, God it, it looks pretty darn good. It's, you know, it's hard to find, you know, really bad-looking yards and stuff that, that have been let go, so that's encouraging, and I just think that's going to keep on happening in the future.
Thank you. Last item, Claims and Payroll.
Some of, Mr. Mayor.
Second, Councilmember Garcia. All in favor?
Aye.
Claims and Payroll is passed. There being no additional open forum requests, this meeting is adjourned.